Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the September 8th Planning Commission meeting and ask Commissioner Opal to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, everyone. And repeat, along with me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Brings us to roll call.
Please let the record show that all Planning Commissioners are present at tonight's meeting.
All right, thank you. Moving on to Item A or Item One, which is approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion or any comments?
I'll move approval as written.
I'll second.
All right, that's a first, second. All in favor say aye.
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 Epstein, I was absent.
Perfect, thank you. All right, that item carries, which moves us to public comments. Anyone wishing to address the Planning Commission during the public comment section or on an agenda item is asked to complete a request-to-speak form that is available at the door. The completed form is to be submitted to the Planning Commission Secretary prior to an individual being heard by the Planning Commission. Any person wishing to address the Planning Commission on a subject matter other than those scheduled on the agenda is requested to do so at this time. In order to conduct a timely meeting, there will be a three-minute time limit per person and an overall time limit of 15 minutes for the public comment portion of the agenda. State law prohibits the Planning Commission from taking any action on a specific item unless it appears on the posted agenda. Do we have any public speakers tonight?
We have no requests.
Great, thank you. Moves us on to the consent calendar. We don't have any consent items. Moving to public hearings, Item Two, which is a site development permit, STP 25-002. Do we have a staff report?
Senior Planner Alyssa Gonzalez has your staff report.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Alyssa Gonzalez and I'm the project planner for the project located at 26881 Cae Monterey. The project is located within the RSF7 zoning district as well as within Capistrano Beach. Here you can see it's located at the corner of Cae Monterey and Camino El Malino and it is just south of the San Juan Capistrano city boundary. Here's a picture of the existing conditions and this is actually the view off of Cae Monterey to kind of get the whole picture going for you. This is a 10,878 square foot lot with an existing single-family dwelling that contains an attached garage. And the image to the right is an existing detached garage and that's actually located at the rear of the lot. I do want to make note that for the existing single-family dwelling, that attached garage is non-conforming. It does contain non-conforming dimensions, size dimensions for a two-car garage, and it has a driveway length that is less than 20 feet. Here are pictures of the adjacent properties. And the scope of work includes the construction of a 1,184 square foot detached accessory dwelling unit with an attached two-car garage. And a site development permit is required since the proposed ADU exceeds the 1,000 square foot limit for multi-bedroom ADUs as outlined in Dana Point Zoning Code Section 9.07.210. Now here's the proposed site plan. And now in that red area is where the existing detached garage is. Now that's going to be demolished and where the new detached ADU is going to be constructed with that attached two-car garage. Now here's the floor plan of the ADU. This contains two bedrooms, two bathrooms, a shared kitchen and living room area. The entrance here is going to be to the south of the property located off Cae Monterey as well as there is a laundry mudroom towards the rear of that with a patio and porch. Here are the front and rear elevations. And again, that front area is going to be off of Cae Monterey. And the total height of the structure is about 15 feet and meeting the ADU height requirements. And here are the west and east elevations. Now here the applicable ADU development standards. And now you can see it's meeting all those applicable development standards except for the floor area for ADUs. However, through the site development permit process, we can approve a floor area greater than 1,000 square feet for an ADU with more than one bedroom. And here's an image to highlight some of the parking areas. Again, they are now constructing a compliant two-car garage as well as we could see here, there's two cars that can fit in this driveway here. And it is a compliant driveway. And with all that, staff recommends the Planning Commission approve STP 25-0002, subject to the findings and conditions included in the draft resolution. Thank you for your time. I'm here to answer any questions as well as the homeowners.
Great, thank you for that report. Appreciate it. Any questions for staff?
No questions, thank you.
All right, no questions for staff, which will open the public hearing. Do we have any?
We have no requests.
No requests to speak? Great, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission for discussion and a vote. Anybody want to start?
I can make the finding this fairly simple, cut and dry.
Okay. Vice Chair?
No comments. I agree.
Commissioner Opal?
I truly appreciate that in dumping the garage, they're actually able to bring back another garage for the ADU just to, I'm sure there aren't any parking issues in that area, but still it's great to have that along with the ADU, so very supportive of it.
All right. Great, I can agree. I also make the findings is consistent with our zoning with the site development permit. Certainly something we can approve. I don't have any concerns about it. I do agree with Commissioner Opal in regards to replacing a garage with a garage as well as adding more residential space. So I'm in full support of the project and looking for a motion.
All right, I'll go ahead and make a motion that the Planning Commission adopt the draft resolution approving site development permit, STP 25-0002.
I'll second.
All right, that's a first and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that item carries. Congratulations. Moving on to the next business item is Item Three, Master Temporary Site Development Permit, MTSDP 25-0023. Do we have a staff report?
Senior Planner Danny Geomenech has your staff report.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Chair Nelson, fellow Commissioners. Project before you tonight is a Master Temporary Site Development Permit for the, I'm sorry, for the Marriott Hotel. It's to approve around 30 non-consecutive special events that may be, that may include amplified music, sound, and live events within the Lantern Bay Park middle lawn area between October 2025 through So this is an aerial. As you can see, on the top left there, the private Marriott event space highlighted in the center lawn there. And then below, just below that, you'll see the middle lawn identifier. Those arrows are pointing to those locations. As you can see where the artificial turf is on the top right there, that is the current Marriott event space. So the Marriott is undergoing a renovation within the next two years. And this particular, this particular part of the, part of the Marriott or the exterior area is going to be remodeled within the next year here. And as part of that, they're looking to, to move their event space to the, to the middle lawn here, which is owned by the City of Dana Point, City Park, obviously. As you can see, Lantern Bay Park, even up there, it's a pretty big space. This particular area makes up the, the area between the two, the tree lines on the left-hand side there on the bottom left of the picture, just in front of the Marriott private event space that they'll be utilizing. So because this, this project is located off of the private property and is a permit for nine or more consecutive, non-consecutive events within a calendar year, it does require the approval of Master Temporary Site Development Permit. As like any, these are subject to review and approval by the Planning Commission and a public hearing is required. So these are some images of the current event space on private property and then that red line or that red arrow pointing to the middle lawn area where it will be moved to temporarily. Like the private events, these will be very similar, same feel. There will be obviously amplified sound only during private events and will be designated specifically to that middle lawn area. Oops. The, the operation or the events would only be allowed to be held between 10:00 AM and 9:00 PM, so cutting off amplified music at 9:00 PM sharp. And there would be a small stage that would have speakers and a live band that would be allowed as well, similar to what you see here. As per the, the approval, the speakers may only face the hotel or towards the ocean. They are not permitted to face towards the north, the northwest where residential is located with like the Lantern Bay Estates and the Lantern Bay condos are. So again, music would be either directed out or towards the hotel. The applicant has also provided a sound abatement plan that includes the things I've talked about, so directing speakers away from residential, doing short sound checks, no rehearsals allowed onsite, and all amplification, as I said, ending at 9:00 PM sharp. The resolution, which is included with the report, has conditions of approval, obviously, and there's specific ones to this which require that the, that the Marriott notify the city within three weeks prior to each special event permit and that the expiration of this special events permit would be on June 30th, 2026. And at that time, they'd either have to ask the director for renewal or obviously cease utilizing the park area. And then the amplified music associated with the permit, if any of that is in violation of the city code or within the conditions of approval, they would have to pause until the, pause any future events until those items are corrected. So there's a series of four findings that are required for a special event permit or a master temporary site development permit. It's important to note that the approval of the subject permit with the identified conditions of approval allows for greater control enforcement of the abilities from the City of Dana Point. And the temporary site development permit expires, obviously, and at that point, it allows the city to reevaluate or reissue the permit each year based on the application compliance. Considering that the remodel is going on at the same time, the Marriott plans to only utilize this area during the remodel and the renovation. And as soon as they are complete, they will be bringing everything back behind the, the public side to private property on that, on that grass area. So again, it's just a temporary thing. It's not going to last too long. So with that, staff finds the proposal. Proposal is consistent with the basis of approval for the Master Temporary Site Development Permit. Justification for the findings can be made and are detailed in the attached draft Planning Commission resolution along with the conditions of approval. This concludes my presentation. Myself, as well as the hotel manager, are here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Questions for staff? Commissioner Opal?
Danny, I just have one question. Are there other events that utilize this area that the city already has scheduled or planned?
That is a good question. Jeff, would you mind?
Yes, the city does have several events planned and we will work with the Marriott to schedule our normally scheduled events there.
Okay, just, I just wanted to see if we had given them a list of dates that were done.
We have.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
There's a walkway that's, yeah, behind that. Is the public still going to be permitted to use those walkways when they are having events?
I believe that the middle lawn area would be the area that is south of the, the walkway. So...
Like are we anticipating any kind of like closures of any of the path, the walking paths that are up there?
The public will be able to use the park at all times during any of the events.
Awesome, thank you.
Other than the speakers being, facing towards the ocean or, or the other way, is there any other limitation on sound by way of decibel levels?
So the city ordinance requires that decibel levels be at 55 decibels from the point at which it's heard. So from, for instance, the nearby communities. So if we're getting complaints, that may require that we send out enforcement to those particular locations to do a decibel reading. So that is something that we still continue to enforce. That said, obviously with special events, sometimes there is decibel readings that could be higher, which are taken into account when we, when we approve each individual event. So they're still going to have to come back, right, as I said, three weeks before an event to submit a standard special event permit. And that, at that time, if there is exceeding of levels, that will be evaluated, evaluated then.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, couple quick clarifying questions. On, there's a condition 11 which requires defense for the event that they have liquor sales or liquor being served. I know it's not on this plan. I assume that when they come in for their normal permits, they would include a fence plan if there was...
Yeah, correct. So not all events, obviously, will have a license to serve or will, will be serving. So in the ones that do, they will have their own loca- So in the ones that do, they will have their own location or area that's still barrier, and that may change.
And staff will review that?
Sure.
Okay. The other one was in their, in their noise mitigation, I think it's document five, it calls out 10:00 p.m. as their stop time, but our requirement's nine. Just want to make sure everybody's on the same page.
Correct, so the amplified sound or that, and live music is limited to 9:00 p.m. if an event is still going on after then, the live music or the amplified music would have to be cut off at that point.
At nine.
Yeah.
Okay.
Understanding that, you know, the party is ending by 10.
And I did see that in the applicant's letter, there was a request for fee waiver, but that's not something that we take up here, right?
Not to Planning Commission, that would be to City Council.
Perfect. That is all I have, thank you. Which brings us to public comments or open the public hearing?
We have none.
None, okay, great, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion.
Sure, I'll start us off. No, I, I can make the findings to support this. I've witnessed a couple of events here, and thank you for the presentation, Danny. And the Marriott there, I think is a great resource to the community. The events that I've seen looked top-notch, really well-run, well-planned. I know, you know, there's going to be a lot of events and a lot of coordination, so it's good to see the Marriott team here out to support it, and I'm confident that with city support and coordination, these will go fairly well. So, yeah, I can fully support this.
I concur, and I can make the findings, too.
Additional comments?
Nope. Okay, great. I, too, can support this. Certainly the use is consistent with our zoning. I believe the site is big enough, there's enough room for everybody to fit there, and want to support our local hotels, so I'm in full support and look for a motion.
I'll move that we adopt the resolution approving a master temporary site development permit, MTSDP 25-0023.
I'll second that. So with that, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No. All right, that item carries, congratulations. Moving on to the next item of business, which is item four, general plan amendment GPA 22-002. I assume we have a staff report for this.
Chris Johnson will introduce the topic and introduce our contractors here to discuss
Good evening, Chair Nelson and members of the commission. On June 23rd, city staff and its consultant team presented a comprehensive update on the general plan to the Planning Commission. That presentation focused on proposed amendments to the circulation and mobility element and economic development element. The presentation included a discussion of key goals and policies developed by the city's staff following several months of coordination with the General Plan Advisory Committee. Tonight's presentation and detailed materials provided to the Planning Commission mark the completion of Phase Two efforts and therefore the completion of the general plan update. Materials reviewed and recommended for adoption by the Planning Commission meeting on June 23rd, along with documentation presented this evening, will be presented at a comprehensive package, as a comprehensive package for City Council approval in early October. I'm joined this evening by our consultant team led by Colin Drucker from Placeworks, who will provide an overview of the process and the documentation provided this evening for consideration.
All right, good to see folks here again. So what we really had was an opportunity to leverage the efforts that have been ongoing with the circulation and economic development element, and kind of bolt on some additional compliance regarding the public safety element. So we've got some new laws that passed that we did consider while we were doing the circulation element update, but they required more technical analysis. There was some additional implementation related to the circulation element regarding levels of service and VMT, and looking at the city's roadway networks compared to the master plan of arterial highways that's managed by OCTA. So what we really did was, we saw the timeline of the efforts to update the circulation element update and economic development, and were able to infuse the public safety element update, which was only updated relatively recently, but because of the new wildfire mapping and some other issues, there was just this nice confluence of timelines that allowed us to come in and just do it all under one process. So that's why we're here tonight, is to really update that. So I'm going to go over the, the key changes. So the first one, really minor, we talked to the state. We had landslide hazards mapped before, but the state wanted to see some more specific subset of those hazards, which are in what are called zones of required investigation. So we added that to this figure here, which looks at liquefaction zones and landslide zones that are, that the state actually regulates. Then on the flood hazards, as you know, the, the city updated its, and really adopted its local hazard mitigation plan, so we added in some additional mapping and some policies to really align and make sure that those two documents are consistent. The wildfire maps, which are obviously the, the most well-known portions of all of the public safety planning that's been going on, really expanded the zones ever so slightly in Dana Point, refined them a little bit with a little bit more nuance and new detail, and what a real big change was understanding the additional zones that surround Dana Point. So we updated those maps, and then that informed the evacuation assessments that you'll hear more from, from Farr and Pierce in a little bit of, of time. And then we talked with CAL FIRE, the state's agency on wildfire hazards and, and planning and prevention, and there is a required process for any jurisdiction with land in the high fire hazard severity zones to go through a process where they give the, the public safety elements to CAL FIRE. They have a right to a 90-day review process, they make recommendations. It is good, they are an expert as a state, as a state agency on wildfire prevention. It's good to take those in consideration, and then we baked those in. It's really a lot of additional detail. It's a little bit more detail than, than some of the policies, but provides clearer direction. There's a little bit of redundancy, too, but it's really what CAL FIRE is recommending. And then we also refined the evacuation mapping, not really changing the routes, just refining the mapping a little bit, bringing into, into the mapping the other routes surrounding Dana Point, looking at the major regional systems, and then adding some additional policies. So now I'm going to turn it over to Brian Wolfe from Farr and Pierce, and they were going to walk you through the evacuation assessment, some of the other technical updates, and then I'll be back to talk to you about what we all came here for, CEQA.
Awesome, thank you, Colin. My name is Brian Wolfe, I'm with Farr and Pierce, the transportation consultant that's been working on the general plan update. So, yeah, as Colin mentioned, we'll jump into the evacuation assessment. So just to provide some background, AB 747 was passed at the state level, and it requires local governments, as when they update their public safety element, to identify evacuation routes, and then identify, or assess their capacity, their safety, and their viability on, under a range of plausible scenarios. And so this is an effort that builds off past actions by the city to put together an emergency operations plan, the local hazard mitigation plan, and really just sets the city up for long-term planning for evacuation. So the current evacuation procedures, the city works in hand-in-hand with the OC Fire Authority to establish regional evacuation routes, which are shown on the map here, essentially all of the arterial roadways within the city. There's also different evacuation zones. These are used, along with a wireless emergency alert system, to communicate emergency orders and just general guidance for residents and employees in the city. The city coordinates emergency response through the Emergency Management Office, and also has a community emergency response training program to really have grassroots efforts in the community to support evacuation. So all of this went into our evacuation modeling that we focused on for the general plan update here, and we looked at three possible scenarios, referencing the local hazard mitigation plan, as well as city staff discussion about the most likely or plausible evacuation scenarios. These are not all the possible scenarios, but provide a good cross-section of potential situations. So we look at a flooding scenario, a scenario that is tied to an earthquake or tsunami event that would then result in liquefaction and an evacuation of the southeast portion of the city, shown in green there. And then scenario three is wildfire up in the northwest portion of the city. So to provide a high-level overview of all of the technical analysis, we followed a four-step process. The first step was to determine the number of evacuees and vehicles in that affected area. So we look at population, jobs spread throughout the city, both for current and future conditions. We then assign or allocate vehicles to the most likely evacuation routes based on their proximity to those routes. We then determine the capacity of each route, which is generally around 475, 500 vehicles per hour per lane, and this is based on measured observations of past evacuation events throughout the state. And then from there, we do a simple calculation of demand divided by capacity to get a, a total evacuation clearance time. A couple of considerations, the two scenarios, the liquefaction scenario and the wildfire scenario, assume full occupancy of the beach and harbor parking lots at the time of evacuation, just to recognize the high level of tourism in the city. All scenarios also account for background traffic, and this is traffic that is already on the road at the time of the evacuation order, really just to provide a conservative assessment for planning. And then finally, all scenarios assume evacuation orders are issued at the same time. So this is, again, a conservative estimate, sometimes evacuation orders could be more dispersed or range over several hours. So before I jump into the results, I do want to provide just some context that really is no single good or bad number, it's really just information. We should obviously be striving for a shorter evacuation time, which would indicate a more efficient roadway network with fewer bottlenecks. A longer evacuation time would suggest that there's congestion at a specific point, and ultimately, this study is really to help emergency responders with decision-making. If they know that there's going to be a bottleneck here at this particular point, maybe they can position staff to help expedite the evacuation process. It also helps the city identify where improvements would make the greatest difference in building that resiliency in evacuation. Also denote that the results do not include time for other phases of the emergency, so hazard detection, the time it takes for people to gather their belongings, this is just the time, once they're in their vehicles, to get out of the evacuation area. So for the results, we'll start with scenario one, which is the flooding scenario in the southeast portion of the city. It'd be the zones in green there that would be evacuating. We see for existing and future conditions, just under two hours on average for the total evacuation clearance time, with the two bottleneck locations being Del Abyspo Street heading northbound, and Camino Capistrano heading northbound at around two and a half to three hours in existing, and just over three in the future. The second scenario involves the same evacuation area, but would also potentially result in closures of roads heading to the east, so I-5 would be blocked, for example, here. And so we looked here with the total evacuating vehicles, this also includes the beach and harbor traffic, would be around four to four and a half hours average across all routes, with the bottlenecks again being Del Abyspo Street and then PCH heading northbound at about five and a half to six hours. The last scenario looks at the wildfire, with the roads heading inland being closed due to a wildfire risk, and we see the two routes being the bottleneck locations are PCH heading southbound towards the Lantern District, and then Stone Hill heading east towards the freeway, with a bottleneck clearance time of around three to four hours. So the evacuation assessment lists a lot of the recommendations for the city to consider. A lot of this is already underway with the city's emergency operations plan and the LHMP, as well as other policies. We did identify additional recommendations that are tied into the public safety element, things related to preparation, so for example, adding evacuation wayfinding signs, traffic control measures that can be used by public workstaff or emergency responders, different evacuation procedures such as utilizing trolley vehicles in high tourist areas, and then education component as well, coordinating with the school district, as well as hotels and other tourist businesses. Great, so I will move on to the next topic, VMT and LOS. This is related to the city's transportation impact assessment, so as part of development review, reviewing those projects, and there's two metrics that projects are looked at, the first of which is VMT, or vehicle miles traveled. This is the metric that is used under CEQA to identify transportation impacts, and the city is encouraged to adopt local guidelines per SB 743. VMT is a metric that measures the overall level of driving. The way it's calculated, it's the total number of miles that are driven by all vehicles, and you can analyze it several ways, either total VMT in a city, total VMT generated by a project, so the two most common ways, and more often, it's actually looked at as an efficiency metric, so you look at VMT per resident or VMT per employee, or a combination of the two. This focuses on the demand side of transportation, so a lot of the mitigation strategies are, how can we encourage people to consider travel options, or maybe reduce their length of their trip? Related to that is level of service. So level of service is not used in CEQA, however, it is a general plan policy, and it will be incorporated in the draft Transportation Impact Assessment Guidelines. Level of service describes traffic conditions and helps identify congestion hotspots. It is based on average delay or wait times at an intersection, and from there, it can help inform a lot of local planning decisions. So if a particular intersection is seen be improved, really any of the supply side of transportation. So when are VMT and LOS analyses required? Per the new updated TIA guidelines that you're reviewing, the VMT analysis will be required for CEQA projects that are not consistent with the general plan, and this is also for projects that do not screen out of certain require, or certain categories the state provides, for example, affordable housing, those projects are able to screen through that VMT process. LOS projects, or LOS analyses will be required for projects that add 50 or more trips to the roadway during the morning or afternoon peak hours, and this is consistent with the current city policy. The city traffic engineer will determine if a project requires a VMT and/or an LOS analysis by using the updated guidelines. So as part of the action with the general plan update is establishing VMT thresholds of significance, and so again, as I mentioned, CEQA really encourages local agencies to adopt thresholds that are based on substantial evidence and through a public process. These are the thresholds that will be used to compare against incoming development projects, and are really tearing off a lot of the state recommendations, as well as guidelines that other jurisdictions in South OC use. For example, we looked at San Juan Capistrano, Irvine, Costa Mesa, Newport Beach, these are all in line with those, those cities here. Not to get too wonky with the different terms and the thresholds of significance, they do vary based on the proposed land use of a project. For residential projects, we're looking, the threshold is 15% below existing citywide VMT per service population, which is residents plus employees. So we take all the VMT that's happening in the city, divided by the total number of residents and employees, and then take 15% below that, and that is in line with the state recommendation to achieve a lot of the greenhouse gas reduction targets at the state level, and just promote a more efficient transportation system. For office and industrial projects, we use the same 15% threshold, however, we look at it at the county level, as these projects have a more regional draw for their employees. For retail, hospitality, and other projects, instead of using that 15% below existing, we use just a below existing threshold, as is done in a lot of other beach cities in OC, as these land uses really attract a high number of tourists, large regional draws, and it is a little more difficult to achieve the reduction targets for these particular types of projects. For mixed use, there is a range of the threshold between 0 and 15%, and it depends on the amount of residential that's proposed in a project. So the more mixed use, or the more retail and hospitality-heavy it becomes, then it will have a lower threshold to achieve. So it's really trying to encourage that mixed use development, and is in line with a lot of the recommendations at the state level. For transportation projects, these would be roadway projects, we are looking to make sure, or the threshold is a no net increase in citywide VMT, and so this would see if a potential roadway project would encourage additional driving, and we would evaluate against that. against that. So for mitigation, as far as options that are available for projects, if they are coming in above those thresholds, potentially, they could bring jobs, housing, and services closer. What this would be is mixed use, so encouraging maybe shorter trips to provide that close-by access to maybe a coffee shop or any of those other uses. Enhanced transit options or bike and pedestrian connections to provide travel options, so that can help reduce VMT for a project. And also encouraging carpooling and charging or managing parking is another effective strategy. So for level of service, we're largely maintaining the same city policy, which is a level of service D threshold, and this means 55 seconds of delay on average at an intersection. So maintaining that policy, but emphasizing that is for year-round, so not just the off-season, but also during the summer, just to account for that season traffic. The LOS guidelines, now that it is a city policy decision, we do have some flexibility that we're proposing to allow the city to deviate from the LOS policy if widening is not practical. So for example, in the Lantern District, if we see a failing intersection at that location, it might be in the city's interest to maintain its current footprint, to promote walkability or other just conditions in the downtown, even if we're willing to accept a level of service lower than D. And this would be done on a case-by-case basis for each project. All right, and the last topic, hopefully I'm not boring you with all this transportation stuff, is MPAH and the MPH amendments. So MPAH stands for the Master Plan of Arterial Highways, and this is a program that is coordinated by OCTA to manage all of the arterial or nonfreeway roadways in the county. Has three main goals. The first is consistency between each city. We don't want an arterial dumping onto a collector to the next city over. It also provides guidelines for roadway standards in terms of how each roadway should look, and then also really with the emphasis of complementing the regional freeway network. The arterial roadways connect people to the freeways, and we want to make sure that that system is functioning well. So why are we updating it? The main thing is consistency. A lot of the current designations are out of step or out of line with the current actual on-the-ground conditions, as we'll see in a moment, and this is really just an opportunity to clean every document up and also update it to align with the past projects that the city has done, such as the road diet on Selva and PCH in the southeast. So this next two slides show two different maps. The first one is the existing roadway designations, and we'll see most of these miss represent current roadway conditions. For example, all the roadway segments in orange are major arterials, which OCTA defines as having six lanes, three in each direction. However, all these roadways, or most of them, except the little part of PCH, have four lanes, two in each direction. So these were set 30 years ago, when the city was growing and setting itself up, but now is the time where we can clean this up in all one go with the general plan update. So the proposed changes, they're really just reflecting current on-the-ground conditions. There are two locations where we're seeing potential changes. The first is Del Prado Avenue, number one there, that little segment between Golden Lantern and PCH, where it has two eastbound lanes. The city has expressed interest in potentially converting that to have one lane in each direction, that would be studied at a later date. And then the second is down Camino de Estrella, down in the southeast, where right now it is two, or four lanes, two in each direction, and the city could also look at potentially restriping that to have one lane. And those, both of those projects would be evaluated and further later. This is just setting it up so that way, if the city does want to make those changes, it's a little bit easier to do so. The other change is removing Dana Point Harbor Drive west of Golden Lanterns. You see in the before map, it's extending west of Golden Lantern down there by the harbor, and now we're trimming it up as that segment does not provide any regional connectivity. So with that, hand it back over to Colin.
Yeah. And this last part will be very brief to wrap it up. Essentially, what we were able to do with phase two was leverage the city's existing CEQA documentation, address the circulation and economic development element updates, and now what we've done is just nosed in the public safety element updates and reference these other technical updates in the same CEQA document so that you don't have to do CEQA again for, for these other updates. So none of the changes from the public safety element or any of the other referenced amendments or technical updates would create any new significant impacts, so the addendum is still the appropriate vehicle. So the next step is really for this body to discuss and provide a recommendation on these updates, and then as Chris mentioned, the idea is if this moves forward from here, go to the city council in October with everything in one fell swoop, and then, once the city provides direction, that will be carried forward into OCTA's board meeting later this year. So I'll leave this up. This is the set of recommendations that we had for the commission. Otherwise, we remain available for questions.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. Appreciate both of you presenting. Questions for our team?
No questions. Great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. No questions?
I have one, and I think this might be to legal and not city staff. The four resolutions are all independent of one, of another, correct?
That's correct.
So the only question I have is resolution, the first one in Action Document One, after the recitals, the now there fours are numbered one through six, and then when I go to the one in Document Two, it's like A through E, and then I go to the third one and it's F through J, and then I go to the fourth one and it's L through O or something like that. So it's not like one through five, one through five, one through five, one through five? So I don't know if it's just numbering that needs to be cleaned up or if that was something intentional.
I think that's numbering that needs to be cleaned up.
Okay. Thank you.
I got some questions for you guys. I'm not sure where to start, so I'm just gonna go, and you both might have to just jump up and down here. So I want to start on, just really want to understand what we're adopting or what we're recommending for adoption, specifically when we talk VMTs, and I'm trying to wrap my head around what is, what is our standard of 15% below the city average VMT per service population actually mean? I mean, I think I understand it, but can you break that down for me?
Yeah, I'll do my best. It's, I know it's a little wonky topic, but, so essentially, you set up a threshold, and the way this is done is we look at all the VMT that's currently being generated in the city. And so how do we do that? We take the number of trips that people coming from going to the city, we track how long each of those people are traveling, we sum all that up, and that is the total amount of VMT that's attributed to Dana Point. And that includes trips that are within, entirely within the city, trips that go from the city to somewhere else or from somewhere else to Dana Point. Then we, to get a per-person basis, we look at the number of residents and the number of employees within the city. Some of those might be double counted, that is okay, because they're part of the overall activity that's happening in the city. So we take that total VMT number, divided by that service population, to get a per-service population metric. And then from there, our threshold is 15% below that. And the reason why it's 15% below is to align with a lot of the state targets, to have a more efficient transportation system, and we're promoting more efficient development patterns for a lot of those new developments that are coming in. So a project would then evaluate their VMT, so a project's VMT would be the number of trips to, to and from that project, times their length, and then divided by the number of people that live and/or work there. Did that?
I kind of get it. It seems like a lot of math.
Some math, yes.
Okay, so I guess the kind of follow-up question, if I go to our, the screening process, because what I'm trying to understand is, and I assume we don't have a lot of choices here, and we have some pretty direct-
Yeah, so the state, the state CEQA law sets up a lot of the different screening criteria that is incorporated in the city's proposed TIA guidelines there. So for example, if your project is near what they, what the state calls a high-quality transit area, and so this is areas that are served 20 minutes by bus or train, then you can screen your project from VMT. It's presumed to be less than significant impact with that. That doesn't apply to Dana Point. Couple other metrics that do exist is what's called a low VMT zone, and so this is, we, if a development is going into an area that already has a lower or better, 15% below city average, like within that particular zone, it's more efficient, then we can presume that it will behave similarly and therefore can also screen out from VMT assessment. One thing you'll note on those maps there is a lot of the high-activity areas, like the Harbor District, a lot of where a lot of the commercial is happening, those are actually the high VMT zone areas, because there's just a lot of customers and people coming to those sites and relatively few number of residents and employees. So your numerator is super high and your denominator is super low, and so that creates a higher threshold there. The other option is what's called local serving land uses. So these are land uses that are intended primarily for residents, so for example, like schools, parks, small serving retail, so if you open up maybe a coffee shop near a neighborhood, that might encourage some people, instead of driving to their current favorite coffee shop, they can go to that one and walk there instead. And so it really just creates, that's another option, and then affordable housing is another screening criteria. So those are all in state law and incorporated in the guidelines here.
Okay. So I have that part. I think that makes sense. So when you, so if you have a project that's in a high VMT zone, it's zoned, so for the sake of this, it's zone residential, the project's proposed at the density that's allowed, but they exceed, but they automatically, they're gonna, are they gonna come in? So if you can't screen out, is it assumed that they're already gonna have a VMT impact?
So if it's consistent with the general plan, then it doesn't have to go through the VMT analysis since it's covered under that, but if it is a change to that, then what would happen is, and it doesn't screen out, it would have to go through a full VMT assessment, and so what that does is, the project would have to look at how much, how many trips is it generating, how far are each of those trips going, basically determine the amount of VMT that that project is generating, and then compare it against the city average. If it comes in above, it has to identify mitigation strategies that can potentially bring it below, and then of course, if it doesn't even cover that, then there is the potential for a statement of overriding considerations.
Okay. That's sort of where I was going, but I think you said one key thing, I want to make sure that it's, that I understood. If it's zoned and consistent with their general plan, even if it's screened, doesn't screen out, it still wouldn't have an impact?
It's still covered under that, presuming it's consistent with the general plan.
So then it does screen out?
Yes.
Okay.
Through that process.
Perfect. And then the options, like you said, if you can't mitigate, there is no bank, and there aren't enough mitigation measures, then you end up kicking it into a full-blown EIR.
Correct.
Overrides, okay. Perfect. That's what I wanted to understand, that's helpful. Other question, I think it's good for you too, is, I was looking at the evacuation charts and the, the time that it takes for it to clear, which seems like a long time, at least when I look at it, seems four, four or five hours. Is there an acceptable time, or is it just required that we include that in our documents?
So for consistency with the AB 747 law, it's just a statement, and there's really no threshold at the state level, there's no threshold really anywhere that says this is a good number, this is a bad number. It's really just to inform decision-making, and you know, if the city wants to look at maybe widening the shoulder a little bit to provide additional capacity in an emergency, they can consider that here, or just to help emergency responders, if they know ahead of time that that's the bottleneck, that could also help potentially, potentially shorten that up a bit.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I guess the last one that you brought up, I'm more curious than anything in regards to providing flexibility in our LOS standards, where's that determined? Who determines when a project could be flexible?
So it would be through a project-by-project basis, and so the LOS analysis would be conducted, and perhaps maybe an intersection or location is found to be below LOSD, that would be brought before in a public process, and it would be determined at that time if there is a potential, and it's really a case-by-case basis, sometimes a study might identify an intersection failing, and it suggests, you know, widening it, adding a second turn lane, for example, but it's clearly obvious that there's no room for that, and so it just really provides some flexibility, but that would be done at a project-by-project level and brought forward.
Okay. So in a nutshell, if I hear you right, what would happen is it'd come forward, it'd have an intersection that doesn't comply with our LOS, and in our general plan, we have flexibility to still approve those projects without an quote-unquote "impact" to our generals.
Correct, correct. So just laying it out in the general plan level that we are potentially okay with this.
Perfect. Great. Thank you, sir. That was all I had. Appreciate it. All right.
I have a follow-up question based on this discussion. Can you give us an example where VMT, basically on a project, is compliant with the, or consistent with the general plan, but it exceeds the number, and they need to either go full-blown EIR, as I understood, or there is some mitigation measures? Can you give us some examples of those mitigation measures?
Yeah, so the mitigation measures, we list them out on the slide here, and this is all project-specific. A lot of the ones, there's, I guess, three main avenues. One would be the changing of the project description, so if you provide mixed use, that is a way that, and there's calculations that transportation planners will do to estimate how much that VMT is reduced, and so if you provide that mixed use, you just give more options for people to not get in their car every time for a trip. The other option would be providing travel options, so a project might, you know, provide free transit passes to their employees, and that could help reduce some VMT related to that, or just providing bike and pedestrian routes, some benefits with those. Some other, probably the biggest one, and the one that's more and more common that's coming up, is charging for parking. A lot of us instinctively in our heads do this calculation, if, oh, I know it's $20 to park here, I'm for sure gonna carpool there, you know, and just have one car, and so that overall reduces the amount of VMT versus if you didn't charge for parking, where instead you have, you know, all people driving to that one site. And so that's just one example. There's a whole host of strategies, you know, dozens and dozens that we do consider, and they're all project context-specific. For example, sometimes it doesn't make sense to charge for parking, and so then you would have to look at other strategies instead.
And one more, just if you'll clarify, when you were talking about the designations of arterial and MPAH or whatever, relative to Del Prado between Golden Lantern, or between Del Prado and PCH?
Yeah, so that one segment, right now, obviously, Del Prado to the west is one lane in each direction, the city, you know, improved that several years ago. To the east, it does open up to have two lanes going into PCH there. We've had discussions with city staff on that segment of, is that second lane really needed in that direction? The traffic analysis that we conducted as part of the general plan shows that we don't necessarily need that second lane there, and it can function well with just one lane each direction, so really just laying the foundation here, if the city wants to explore that in the future of maybe adding in bike lanes on that segment or other improvements that they can without having to go back to OCTA and re-initiate this process here.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for the staff or the consulting team?
Well, that was my question, then we'll just answer that.
All right, perfect. Then we will go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers tonight?
We have none.
No speakers. All right, close the public hearing, we'll bring it back. If we did want to make a motion, a recommendation, do we do it one by one, or do we do it all at the same time?
You can do it all at the same time, just move staff recommendation, and that'll be sufficient.
Okay, perfect. Do we need to clarify the edits that would go forward to city council with the number in, or is that?
We've already got guidance from you. We'll clarify the edits, even without the motion.
Perfect, thank you. All right, so we'll bring it back. Anybody want to?
I'll make a motion for general plan amendment GPA 22-0002, updating the public safety elements, CEQA addendum to the general plan, environmental impact report, adoption of transit, transportation impact analysis guidelines. impact report, adoption of transportation impact analysis guidelines, and master plan of arterial highway designations to recommend to the city council to, or by adopting a resolution recommending to the city council approval of general plan amendment twenty-two dash zero zero two, updating the city's public safety element in its entirety, adopting a resolution recommending city council adoption of transportation impact analysis guidelines for both CEQA and non CEQA assessment, adopting a resolution recommending the city council approval of amendments to master plan of arterial highway designations, as well as adopting a resolution recommending city council approval of a CEQA addendum to the city's certified E I R for amendments to the public safety element with the corrections made to the numbering of each one of these as articulated earlier.
I'll second.
And that's a person, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That item carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Boop it on to old business. We have none. New business, there is none. We don't have any staff reports. Commissioner comments? We'll just go start on that end if you have any comments.
No comments. Thank you.
No comments.
No comments. All right. Well, that brings us to the end of the meeting. So we will adjourn to the next regular meeting of the Planning Commission, which will be held on September twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, beginning at six P M or soon thereafter in the city council chambers located at thirty-three two eighty-two, Golden Lantern Suite two ten.